To order, if everybody could rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have an agenda?
We do.
I'm sorry, I was sitting up. Very tense meeting. All right, what do we have? Okay. Yes, discussion of, I saw that sub right. Capital non-recurring projects for parks and rec. So we're going to, you're off, Mr. Calabrese.
Oh, good afternoon, everybody. Happy to be here. Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks Recreation. Where would you guys like to start?
Want to start by updating your current true projects?
Sure. Yep. Okay, so we'll go with the non-ARPA projects, so the regular capital and non-recurring projects. So everybody should have received a copy earlier today, but if not, they are, there are hard copies at your seats. So the first one on there is the Lake Mohegan Splash Pad that was approved in fiscal 22 for $150,000. We should have that project substantially completed as of this Thursday at 1:00, where we will turn it on, run the water, make sure everything works, and then winterize it. Then we will, the contractor will come back as soon as the temperatures are 50 degrees or above for more than a week, so probably mid-April, early May, before Memorial Day, and he'll put down the surfacing for the splash pad itself. And then, once the surfacing's done, it only takes a couple days to cure, we'll be open and ready to go for Memorial Day with a brand-new splash pad. So, yeah, we're excited about this one. Next project on there are, is the tennis center light replacement. This is down on Old Dam Road. This is in fiscal 23. You may recall, we went in for $100,000, and then, I'm sure you guys had it all on your agendas at one point or another. We went out to bid, bids came in at $200,000. We started the process of coming back for the additional $100,000 to be able to move forward with this project. We got through the Board of Selectmen, and then it was rejected at the Board of Finance. So, as of right now, that project is not moving forward because we're short. It's okay. The next project is-
What is the rent from the vendor?
About $130,000 a year. Approximately.
And that's negotiated how often? Once a year?
No, that's a 20-year lease.
20-year lease.
Negotiated back in 2013 or '14. So I believe we go through, well, 20 years from there, I think it's '33 or '34. It does have an increase every year. It does escalate, yeah.
What percentage?
I would have to double-check what the percentage is. Shockingly, I might actually have it on me. I do have it on me. Does not say what percentage that it goes up, but it just gives the actual rent that would be due. And it looks like it goes, judging by these numbers, it looks like it goes up about 3% every year. Again, that's just kind of round numbers that I'm seeing, but-
So it's 130 right now, and then-
Yeah, it looks, so the final year, it looks like it'll be in the neighborhood of 160. Again, that's if it doesn't get renegotiated or something else happens.
Do they have an opt-out?
I believe we both do. Okay. So like I said, that project right now is stalled due to lack of funding. Next project on there is the Jackie Durrell Pavilion Upgrades, which is in fiscal 23. We are in the process of finishing or working on that project right now. That's a rebuilds essentially of the two bathrooms, men's and ladies' rooms, and then the kitchen. So those have all been demoed right now, and they're, you know, trying to install the flooring and some of the tiling, and then we'll put new fixtures and everything, and we'll be good to go for opening in mid-April, as usual. But yeah, that's tracking right on par there. Dwight Tennis Courts is the next one, again, a fiscal 23 project for $550,000. This project went out to bid about a week or two ago, came back at 554, so $4,000 over the actual amount of money that we have allocated for it. We can cover that 4,000 in our operating budget, so we opted to move forward with that project. So construction on there, as soon as it gets awarded, it will start as quickly as we can. It's about a 16-week project. Then the big one on here is the Ludlow Middle School Turf. Again, a capital project in fiscal 23 for a little over $4 million. That's in the design phase. We've got, the design is sitting with our purchasing department. They're just finalizing the bid to go out to, for construction. And again, once we have a construction company on, you know, we'll get them on the schedule. Hopefully, late winter, they'll be able to start some stuff, and then get bulk of the work done in the spring, and we'd be shooting for hopefully midsummer, July 1 or so, opening of that field. And then we've got the Lake Mohegan Storm Ida Restoration, where we came for 500, came before you guys, for $500,000. Looking to have some of that reimbursed by FEMA. As of now, that project was split up into three different phases. Phase 1 was basically restore the beach to a usable condition, to how it was basically prior to the storm. We did complete that for the total that you're seeing on here now, which is a little, little over $100,000. Phase 2 was going to include some dredging if it was needed. It looks like it's not needed. All the, the water levels are where they should be, the depths are where they should be based on the 30-year historicals. So we're going to forego Phase 2, but then that leaves us with Phase 3, which is the mitigation, future mitigation and drainage. So we're kind of, I don't want to, we're in a holding pattern on this because we're working with FEMA. We had a call with FEMA today just to see, you know, if they're going to be reimbursing this project. They seem very optimistic. They wanted a little more information on some historical data and maintenance records and stuff to show that the town, you know, essentially takes care of the beach regularly. So once we have that provided, we'll know how much they're going to allocate in reimbursement, and then essentially, we can double that number for reimbursement for the mitigation. So if they, again, this was a 90%, but I'm just going to use round numbers. If they gave us $100,000 for Phase 1, then we're allowed to use $200,000 for mitigation, which would put the total project at around 300, and then obviously, we'd come back and say, hey, we're done with this, and there's savings in the project. So there will be savings. I just don't know the firm numbers yet because, again, we're working with FEMA as best we can, and they don't always respond in a timely fashion, so we're working with them. So those are the capital projects and non-recurring-
Apologies, Anthony. I just want to go back to the turf is in the design phase.
Yep.
So there's no final design as of now, or does it include the varsity baseball field that everybody seems to want? Does it not?
Yes and no. So yes, the design is done. We were able to fit a full-size baseball field in there, but it was never intended to be the varsity baseball team's home field. So there's no grandstands, there's no press box, there's no gigantic scoreboard or any of that nature. And I had had that conversation with their head coach, who's, he's been very good about communicating with me and, you know, going back and forth. So he's been in the loop this whole time. There's no dugouts. I mean, if they want to be able to move a JV freshman game there, I don't think they'd have an issue. If varsity wanted to practice there, absolutely, they will have plenty of space to do that. You're not going to be able to do varsity baseball and softball, or varsity baseball and soccer. So anytime they do take there, does take away from any of the other spring stuff that normally would have been there. But again, between the AD scheduling for the high school athletics and my staff scheduling for the after-school and, you know, Parks and Rec stuff, we'll be able to work that out. But yeah, it does include a full-size baseball field, a full-size softball field, which is the same dimensions as a little-league field, so you will be able to play, as I mentioned during the process, you know, we wanted to find a location where the Fairfield Red Storm could play that's handicap accessible. So we can move them from Mill Hill, put them on a turf field on the weekends, which would be nice for them. But yes, and then it also has a football field, you know, the multipurpose field that'll have everything, all the linings for lacrosse, you know, boys and girls, soccer, all that. And then, and it field hockey, and then it'll have lighting as well. So that's what's included in the design right now.
Is there even any room to put in dugouts, stands over in that corner?
We would have to get pretty, yeah, we'd have to get pretty creative. The home plate is basically down in the corner near the pond over there, near the solar panels. So I don't want to say no, the Board of Ed or, you know, Parks and Rec couldn't down the road, say, hey, we're going to try to squeeze in some small bleachers or something, because we may be able to. But again, the intention was to put a multipurpose field there that we can get lots of use out of, and I think we were able to accomplish that with this design.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay. Yeah.
With the additional use of the varsity baseball team, will that affect the useful life of the field, of the turf?
No, it shouldn't have much effect on it.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Moving on to the ARPA projects. We were lucky enough to have a few ARPA projects granted to us in the process, and I'll start with the Jennings Beach concession upgrades. We pretty much finished that project today with all the siding on the building. It looks, if you hadn't been to Jennings Beach and just went there now, you would think we put a brand-new building there. It came out gorgeous. It's the same building, but we added siding to it, and it just, it made all the difference. We will have, we're not done with our expenses yet, obviously, looking at this, right? It didn't come in that far under budget. But we plan to put on, extend the concession area where people sit. A few more picnic tables on the beach, and then we want to put in sunshade sails that kind of give an artistic look to the concession area, which I think will be a nice addition to it. So we're going to put that in in the spring. Tungstus Hill Playground has been completed, all the playgrounds have been completed.
I'm sorry, Anthony, I apologize. So is that going to use the balance of that cash that's sitting there, or?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for quotes right now on the sunshades themselves. Once I have the quotes, then I'll have an idea of if they need to go out to bid. I don't anticipate that they're going to be over 15,000, so I think we'll be in the three quotes arena, which would mean we'll likely be less than this. We'll have some savings, but I don't know that it's going to be significant, but there should be some savings here. The Tungstus Hill Playground was complete right on, right on 150,000. Melville Playground, you'll see there was a little savings. That playground was completed. Lincoln Park was completed, again, the full balance. Dover Park was completed, there is savings there, and Highwood Park was completed, and again, there is some savings there. The golf course equipment, these were some mowers and stuff, those have all been ordered. So the money's spent, they're just backordered. We do expect to have them in early 2023. Those are our ARPA projects.
Anthony, for the playgrounds, are any-
Handicap, basketball, or have-
Microphone, please.
Use the ours. Any of them have adaptive equipment for children's with disabilities? I had a question from-
Yep. I believe all of these ones do have a few pieces that are adaptive, whether those are swings or seesaws, I don't even know that they call them seesaws anymore. Whatever the new ones are, they are seesaws essentially, but there's definitely some adaptive pieces. Adaptive and ADA compliant and all of that are tricky when it comes to playgrounds, because none of, so none of these playgrounds, we put the rubberized surfacing in.
Okay.
We didn't do that, right? So these playgrounds all still have the wood fiber, which technically does meet the ADA compliance, but it may not always be the most accessible. Not every one of our playgrounds has sidewalks from a sidewalk to get to the playground. So that's something that, over the next few years, again, our master plan pointed this out, we could address that kind of stuff within our operating budget, and I don't need to come for, you know, a bulk of money to say, hey, we're going to go do all these ADA, you know, upgrades. Sometimes it's just as simple as putting a sidewalk in from the sidewalk. Gould Manor is a great example, and again, we recently redid that, but that playground is so far set back behind the pond, there's no sidewalk that takes you from the street or the pickleball court area to the playground. You've got to walk down on the grass. And again, while there might be accessible equipment over there, you can't get to it. So you have that disconnect. So those are things that we've got to work on over the next few years of making our playgrounds a little more accessible. But there are, there are pieces of equipment that are compliant.
There was some frustration shared by parents, just that if they have a child that in a wheelchair, a walker, while it's great there's equipment there, that disappointment that it wasn't addressed on finding a means of being able to get to that equipment easily. So I'm glad to hear that it's in the master plan moving forward. Would just ask as if there's extra money in some of these projects, if anything could be done to increase accessibility, I would ask that you look at that. And one other request that I'll pass along, be that I'm here, if, on the website, if there's any, any playground that's more accessible than others, just to note that, so for families if they want to know where they can bring their children.
Not a problem.
Information is easily accessible.
Yeah, we're in the process of revamping the entire town website, so when we go through and rebuild all the pages, that's part of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, years ago, Anthony, wasn't Spark, remember when they did Owen Fish?
Yeah.
That was a while ago, but they raised all that money, and that isn't very accessible.
Yeah, Owen Fish is very accessible. Obviously, we've got the All Abilities Playground at Mill Hill. We do have some that are very accessible, we have, but we have others, and again, I think Gould Manor is a perfect example of one that might have accessible-
Right, we can make some arrangements to make them more accessible, maybe not have all this stuff. But that group was so great, they did a lot of good work over the years.
Anthony, in addition to the five parks that were on your ARPA projects, how many additional parks are there in town?
Oh, gosh.
Like playgrounds?
We have, I think, I think off the top of my head, there's 31 playgrounds.
Okay. I'm just trying to get some sense, thanks.
Yeah.
Move on to new projects?
Just for clarification, and I apologize if this has been said, but some of these balances coming in under, you know, let's say $80,000 here, I know there's going to be other projects that go over, but what, what is the date that we had to use this by? And are we prioritizing where the surplus is going?
2024, the end of 2024?
Okay.
That we have to spend the money by?
I thought it was also allocated by, I thought we had till 20-
Yeah, sorry. Allocate by 2024 and then spend it by 2026.
And there is a process. We've discussed it quite a bit before the Board of Finance, and I think we actually talked about it at the Board of Ed, we may even talked about it at this table, I don't know if we were last year, but we did talk about what our process is going to be to deal with the surplus. So we just went forward to the Board of Finance a couple of weeks back to ask to use some surplus from the History Center stage that was proposed and didn't make it to finish the Four Corners project at Stratfield, because they were really way over.
So there's still quite a bit of time, though, that's-
Right, right. And county gets to punch over the season and make sure that we're doing. At all times, so we're, we're in full compliance. We're not East Haven, that's for sure. Okay.
All right. I'll jump into new projects that we are proposing for this upcoming year, fiscal 24. First one, I'm just going to go in the order that I have them in my book, so I apologize, but I'm going to start with the driving range, because that's the one I have first here. So the driving range, you guys probably had seen on the waterfall chart, I had $500,000, $550,000 over the last few years. Looking at, trying to break this into two phases, doing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, which is why what you'll see in front of you today is $275,000 for this upcoming year, which is essentially what we're calling Phase 1. This would give us money to improve the driving bay, range bays that are there where you tee off from, potentially adding covered bays to them, potentially adding heat. Again, it just depends on how far the 275 can get us in Phase 1. But replacing all the matting that's there, nets, the storage building that's there, which is essentially an office for the ranger who, you know, sells you the token if you're going up to the booth, we'd like to eliminate that process and make it an automated machine, so, you know, we could then extend the hours of the range. You know, if somebody wanted to go up there at 7:00 in the morning to, you know, just go and hit some golf balls, they'd be able to do that. Where right now, unless you had a, what they call a range key, you could, you could do that if you have the range key. If you don't have a range key, and you're just the everyday, you know, seasonal golfer, I'll call it, you wouldn't be able to do that unless somebody's on staff there to open and sell you a bucket of balls. We would like to eventually add the addition of Top Tracer, which is just a great tool that we're starting to see at a lot of different golf courses, even municipal courses. I believe New Britain just put, put it at their driving range, and it looks fantastic. Essentially, what they just did is kind of what I had envisioned here. And then, we'd like to get, use part of this money for the design of a functional short game area, so not the actual build of the short game area. There's no way we can get that in this amount of money, is that it has to fall into Phase 2 for us. But we would like to get the design portion of it, so we can then, when we come for Phase 2, say, hey, here's the design, and show you guys, this is what we're looking at and looking at doing. So there's no lights included in this, nothing, you know, at this time, in Phase 1, this is pretty basic upgrades to the current facility, but it would still make it, you know, 10 times better than it is in its current status.
What are the current hours? Is it just like dawn to dusk, and if you have a key, you could go there?
So yeah, essentially, it's dawn to dusk if you have a key. If you have the key to the machine, you bought a season pass and have the key, you could go up there before the staff actually comes on. If you don't have, you didn't pay for the key, and again, you're just going up there once in a blue moon, and you want to go hit some golf balls, it's when it's staffed. Normally, that's about 8:00, 8:30, again, depending on the time of year, so-
AM?
AM.
Till?
Till dusk.
Till there, there for 12, okay.
Not the same guy, but yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Well, he's not killing himself, but um, yeah, there's not a lot of heavy lifting involved. Yeah, because I've been up there a couple times this, this year, and there's also, why are there no Ts on those mats up there? Are you, like, really don't want people using drivers off there, or what's the, what's behind that?
I believe that it was because of drivers. They just didn't, I believe it's too, I don't want to say it's too short, because there's plenty of us that could, I can go up there and hit my driver and be perfectly fine, trust me. But there's plenty of, there's plenty of people that would be hitting over into the firing, the police firing range up there, so.
Would you consider putting, there's no net back there, right? On the end of the range?
I don't believe it's on the far end, no. Not on the way, right and left, for sure.
Yeah, I know.
And we're restricted by how high the nets can be by conservation as well. So we do lose a lot of golf balls to both sides because of that, but.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would like to see an upgrade up there as, not that I use it that much, but for the people that do.
Yeah.
Definitely could use a facelift.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a revenue, it is a revenue generator for us, you know. We do pull in about $160,000 a year there, which, again, you know, in the scheme of things, isn't a lot of money, but again, for what the facility is, it's pretty adequate. But I think we could drive that number up.
I was at a hockey game at the Rinks at Shelton up there, and there's a driving range right next to it. It's, they have a lot of greens-
Yep.
-out there. I don't know if that's a consideration for the future, or I don't think they're grass there, fake grass or whatever, but-
Yeah, with the targets and everything, and they've got Top Tracer up there.
And that's a double-decker facility. I don't know if we'd get, maybe we'd get more use with a bigger range or more availability. I'm not sure, but-
So, yeah, so originally, when I proposed this, and I don't remember if I ever got to talk to it, but, you know, I had talked about a double-decker, you know, heated bays, double-decker, and that all sound, sounded great to me. However, my golf staff, my golf pro, really have talked me out of the double-decker. They don't think that we are in the right location to drive that type of traffic up there. They think we'll, you know, by upgrading the current facility, yes, we'll get more use out of it, but they don't see, you know, being able to fill a double-decker all the time. So that's why we kind of scaled it back here.
Where it is, it's not easily accessible.
And it's not near, yeah, I mean, it's not-
It's not near the, right.
-clubhouse, which also hurts us.
Well, yeah.
Anthony, I talked about a top law.
We did, we did, and I've had, you know, and we've had, I've had meetings with several residents that have looked, that have come to me and said, hey, let me lease this from you. Let me lease this from the town. We'll pay for everything, you know, just pay you, you know, the lease for the land. I've always just kind of, I've listened to them, I've heard them out. It just, I don't know that we're in the position yet to relinquish control of the facility. I think, you know, if we add some of these upgrades, I think we'll see more revenue, I think we can generate more revenue than we'd be able to get off of the lease. Again, that's just my opinion at this point, so I'm, I'm open to-
I see, I think it's something that, you know, the commission, we've talked about this obviously quite a bit, but I think it's something the commission should talk about, the Park and Rec Commission, as far as what, what options we have available to us up there. But I have been pushing Anthony about grass, because I think grass would be really nice.
Yes, she has. You have.
I get complaints about it, so, you know, I, you know how it works. I share it with you.
Jim?
In the design proposal that you're at least thinking about right now, I know it's not finalized, where the tee areas would be, is that going to be like poured cement with pads above it, or are you talking about putting this just right on the dirt?
No, it'd be poured cement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. With the thought that it could catch on, I guess you should probably at least consider that when they pour the cement, that it could support a double deck.
Yep, that makes sense.
In the future, I'm glad you're thinking about that.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, okay.
Anthony, do you know how many people use this per season, or have, how many people have keys?
Not off the top of my head. I can get those numbers, we do have reports of them, but no, I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head.
So people actually have keys to the gate?
To the machine, to the ball machine.
Okay, so.
Which we'd be replacing to an automated machine. So again, like, a lot of other courses have, you'd be able to go put your money in and balls come out.
You have to go to the pro shop to get it, and then when you're out of it, you have to go back to the pro shop to refill it.
Yep.
It's, yeah. Gotcha. And then if you, what, the machine only takes tokens.
All right, let's focus on the projects, gentlemen. Go ahead, Anthony.
All right. Any other questions on the golf one? All right. Next one I have on my list is the Fairfield Woods Tennis. So you'll see, you know, in this one, again, you guys don't have the colored pictures, but I think they were also emailed to you. So colored pictures really show, you know, the current status. I took those pictures maybe two weeks ago, so they are recent pictures. You've heard me say before, you know, our tennis courts that are the bituminous material, the asphalt material, really are all at, they're over their extended life at this point. Asphalt normally lasts 10 to 12 years, and then you should grind it up, replace it if you're going to do it. Anywhere we've had more than four courts, I have been a proponent of switching to post-tension concrete, and that's what, luckily, I think all the boards have bought into as well. So, you know, when we redid Tomlinson Middle School, we did post-tension concrete. When we redid the James Blake Courts at Fairfield Ward High School, post-tension concrete. When we redid the courts at Ludlow, it was post-tension. Post-tension is guaranteed not to crack, you have a guarantee for 20 years, and then we have a guarantee on all the lines for 10. So while they cost more money upfront, we do save money in the long run because we're not doing the every-other-year maintenance, and by the time we get to, you know, six, seven, eight years into the life of these, it becomes an every-year maintenance, not an every-other-year. And when we redid, for example, Fairfield Woods in 2019, we did it to the tune of $60,000, and that was just, again, filling cracks, resurfacing. As you can see, it's definitely time to, it would have been time to do that again last year, and then we would be doing it again this year. So again, to spend $60,000 almost every summer to redo these courts just doesn't make financial sense to me. So Fairfield Woods is a perfect opportunity to do the post-tension concrete. So this project, we did put out to bid already. We included it with the Dwight Project and the Tungstus Hill Pickleball that I'm going to talk about next. Just thinking, if we bid all three, pending funding for two of them, that will get better pricing, because, you know, one company can come in and say, hey, yeah, I can give you a really good deal on doing all these courts. So that's where we are with that one. So that's where we are with that one. This one, I think, I'm looking at, I believe it, what's the number you guys see on your sheet? 522? Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at an old one. So, when I originally had this on the waterfall chart, it was 432.6, but when we put it out to bid, it came in at 522. A little less, it was like 521 and change, so I rounded it up, but I changed it, and that's what I would be coming forward today with you guys, is 522 to get this one done. The one, you saw the Dwight one, was 554, so again, four courts, four courts, slightly different layout at Fairfield Woods, but, you know, that's unfortunately the market of what four courts are going for right now.
Anthony, when would this be completed?
So this unfortunate...
Start and be completed?
Yeah, this one has to be a summer project, just because of the staging area with the Fairfield Woods library, where it is, and then school in session, we can't do this work. So it has to be a summer project. So it would, it would start as soon as school is out, and they would have to finish it as much as they can, at least to shrink down the, the staging area by the time school starts. So maybe the project's not fully completed, but at least they're condensed in the, the staging of it. Again, most times, a post-tension takes about 16 weeks to complete, so if they started in June, you know, again, we're probably looking at like October, they'll be done. But a bulk of the work that they need to do in the staging area is when they put the rebar in and pull, pull the tension on the courts. That's really what would make it so the buses and the cars couldn't get in and out of that parking lot easily. Once they've done that after the first couple of weeks, they pull, you know, they cut those, and then they're, they're confined to just the tennis court. So, I'm not concerned that it'll interfere with school or the library once September rolls around.
Okay, all of these projects are going to come up under non-recurring capital when the boards go through them, correct?
That's correct.
So we can't sign a contract now, we got to wait until it's approved, correct?
Correct. I believe we can sign a contract pending the funding...
Okay.
...which is, which is what we, we intend to do. Because Dwight, we have the funding for, so I want to move forward with that immediately. And then they, the contractors know that the other two courts, the other two locations we're looking at are pending. So we may not, I mean, if the board say, hey, yeah, this isn't the time to do this, then they know that that's not going to be part of the contract.
Okay. It's just going to be interesting if we start going into more of a recession, whether, by the time this gets approved, these numbers actually come down, actually. So, okay, thanks.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, moving on to Tunxess Hill Pickleball. All right, so, again, we're in the, a very similar situation with our Tunxess Hill Pickleball. This was a project that was not on the waterfall chart. Honestly, I believed wholeheartedly that I was going to be able to cover this in our operating budget. And when we put it out to bid, the numbers came back and it was 225, and I said, I don't have that in the operating budget. So, here we are, I've got some very angry pickleballers, a very large group of pickleballers that email me...
Oh, yes.
...literally every day.
We have a large group of pickleballers.
We do. You know, it's funny, because whenever I go, whenever I go out to either Gould Manor or Tunxess Hill, they flock to me and they want to know the update. Where are we? When are you getting these courts repaired? Because they have four courts at Tunxess for this project. We're down to just two functional courts there right now. So, we've got trees that are fairly close to the Tunxess, to the pickleball courts, and because it's bituminous asphalt, the roots are growing underneath and they buckled one of the courts. So it's a tripping hazard, so we had to take the nets down. We don't want anybody to fall and sue us, so those nets are down. Court 2 is functional, fine, they play on that one, and then Court 3, when we originally did the conversion to pickleball, we did this in-house, and it was our Public Works guys. And when they set the poles, for whatever reason, the poles on Court 3 have started to, to fold in. So we've reset them, and they fold back in. So at this point, we're like, we're not going to reset them again, so we've pulled the net off of Court 3, so there's no hazard there. So Court 4 works, Court 2 works, and that's what they're playing on, and begging me to put in additional courts. So, looking at this one, again, and how heavily used it is, it only, it's one of those sites, again, that makes sense to me that, you know, we should look at post-tension concrete here. Could we do, you know, the asphalt here again, because it's essentially the size of one tennis court? Yes, we could, but we'll probably be in the exact same situation. We're going to address the trees that are, you know, adjacent to the court, but post-tension really just, again, you have that guarantee that it's not going to crack for 20 years, and that, to me, makes all the difference in the world with these. So, that's where we are. Again, I'd like to hit the ground running with this, but I know that I won't be bringing this, I have to bring this back to the boards when we start the process in January or February. So, unfortunately, that's why I've told the pickleballers, and they're not happy. Story of my life.
They are a passionate group, that's for sure.
Are pickleball and tennis, is it all first come, first served, or are the reservations for the pickleball courts, or how, how does this all work?
We have a reservation system. Basically, we turn the reservations on from April 1st through November 1st normally, and if it's a mild winter, we'll extend the season. Like, right now, the nets are all still out there. Basically, we'll, we'll let it go until we have the, the first significant threat of snowfall. Because once the snow starts, and then the snow gets on the nets and the poles, that's when they start bending. So, we'll take all the nets down before that first storm, and then they're off until the weather warms up, which, again, normally around April 1st. So you can book a reservation, you know, up to, I think, two hour, or two hours a week, something like that, every week. But if nobody's on the court, obviously, you can show up. But if somebody shows up with a permit, and they have the piece of paper that says, hey, this is my permit, well, then you're supposed to yield and let them play. We don't normally get too many issues with the permits for pickleball.
So will they just print out the permit at home?
Yeah, or they show it on their phone. Either way, it works. But again, they're showing it to the other resident. We, we don't have park rangers, so...
There's nobody there monitoring the situation.
Correct. We will get that rare call, and normally, it's baseball fields that this will happen at, where you have two, four baseball teams show up and they want to play, and one's got the permit, and the other ones, they're already playing, they're like, oh, we're not leaving. That's when my phone will ring and say, hey, we need somebody to go over to Owen Fish and handle this. And that's how we do that.
Do any towns in Connecticut charge for pickleball or tennis, or at, let's say, not the schools particularly, but at the parks?
There's none that I know of that charge residents for time. Trumble does charge the little, again, I could think of like the leagues themselves, they charge the leagues hourly, like $8 an hour, so the leagues aren't hoarding...
The courts.
...the time, yeah. Because you'll get some leagues that are, that will take whatever you'll give them.
Right.
But I can't, I can't think of any off the top of my head that charge for tennis or pickleball.
Okay.
Okay. Now I'll move on to the South Pine Creek and Sullivan Turf Field conversion. So again, this one's been on the waterfall chart. Here it is. You know, we're about to break ground on Ludlow. The plan was to have that one, already break ground on that, but obviously, we got hung up on some things. But to keep rolling with this one, we're looking at, you know, 4.3 million, again, that's a vendor quote. Hopefully, the, you know, when we get the bids back from the Ludlow project, we'll have a, a more realistic idea if that actually is the number that we should be looking at. But again, Sullivan and South Pine are probably our, two of our most heavily-used fields. That is our one recreation complex that we have in town. There are lights on, obviously, on the Hayden Softball Field, which is not going to be turfed, and there are lights right now on the Sullivan Football Field. This project would light the soccer field that's next to it as well. Basically, you'd be looking at synthetic turf from, you know, the road all the way to the marsh. This would give us some, obviously, all the extra playing time. We, we've approximated about 550 hours based on going to about 10 o'clock with permits, which is what we could do under lights, not saying we have to do that. We won't have the rainouts down there that we get, we wouldn't be spending all the money to re-sod things in, you know, the football field specifically, you know, at the end of every season. So it just makes it a more functional space, frees up, essentially frees up field time around town for the other leagues. And hope, you know, hopefully, will help with what we, we think is our field shortage at the moment, so... We have talked, and I know the question that should be asked, is we have been in talks with the Fairfield Athletic Foundation to jointly fund this one. What that looks like, as far as an arrangement goes, I don't know. We don't have anything in writing with them yet, but, you know, in talks with the first select woman, it was trying to split this project 50/50. So essentially, them coming with $2 million, raising $2 million, and then this project would be able to go forward. Again, I don't know where that arrangement stands at the moment, but that is the thought to get this project, you know, a little more buy-in from those leagues and that group in particular.
Brenda, where do we stand with that agreement? The agreement that this group who promised to pay for 50% of the artificial turf fields in town?
For this new field?
These are the first two they wanted, right?
Yes.
These are the first two that they, we want these two, and we promised to pay for half of them.
So, we approved...
Microphone, please.
We approved $4 million, what was it, $4 million back in...
Yep, for Ludlow.
Whatever that was, for that field. And I know Mr. Bremer has had meetings with, what's Athletic, what is it?
Fairfield Athletic.
Fairfield Athletic Foundation.
Foundation. Prior, I mean, subsequent to the meetings that I had with them. Dylan O'Connor, Brendan Sullivan, and all that group. We're sort of like stalled with that right now, because we haven't had more meetings to discuss it. I did share with Dylan over the phone and Brendan that, and I know that Mr. Bremer did as well, that the next field proposal they want is going to be four or more million dollars and that. You know, the original discussion was that we would split the costs and that the town picked up the original cost for the first field. So, I know they're, they've been talking about raising money, I think they may have even, I haven't really been keeping my pulse on it, it's got a lot of other things cooking. But, I mean, it's, it's going to be a big discussion. I mean, obviously, you know, Sullivan Field would be a lovely, perfect field to be turfed, and if they could raise the money, that'd be great, and if we could work out some kind of way to do it. Or maybe, and I, I suggested to them that they reach out to the universities, because, you know, a lot of times in towns, you know, university picks up costs of solid, you know, it could be Sacred Heart Field, it could be Fairfield Field, or in Greenwich, people name them after themselves. But I, I do have a little concern, a little about Sullivan Field and, and what could potentially be on that field, because it was a former Nike site, and I have shared that with Brendan and Dylan in our conversation. So right now, to answer your question, that was a long-winded way to answer your question. Your, the answer to the question is, well, we're, I don't have a really good answer yet. Okay, sorry.
Because we're going to need an answer probably within four or five months, four months.
Yeah, I mean...
And then they better be prepared to answer the question.
No, it may get pushed. I think we talked about having Dylan...
We might not approve it without it.
And Brendan, come, be part of this discussion. I don't know. I mean, obviously, I haven't reminded them about it, and I was, I was sick last time, so I missed the meet, we had to cancel the last meeting. I don't know. I mean, it looks like, it might be something that's not going to be...
Yeah.
...obviously discussed this year.
Okay.
Because, I mean, let's face it, we have a lot of stuff on our plate, a lot of financial obligations, and we're having a lot of trouble down at the wastewater treatment facility with the digester, which has been blowing up over the last week and a half regarding problems there. And, you know, we obviously have the Benfield Fund project and the remediation of the soil, so, you know, this might be one that needs to have more talks about during our process, and it might have to be pushed later out in the waterfall...
Sure.
...until this is all figured out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anthony, what do you mean by, where is it? Oh, God. Item number 10, we would likely use an infill such as Envirofill or an organic fill or another infill.
I'm, I'm not limiting our options to just Envirofill, which is a specific type of infill.
Right.
If coconut came back better, better pricing, better everything, then that's what I would use. But essentially, all I'm saying in that line is...
Doesn't that take more maintenance?
Yeah, but all I'm saying in that line is that we're going to meet the RTM ordinance.
What's this ordinance, because I hadn't...
They, they pass an ordinance that we're not allowed to use crumb rubber, or any virgin type rubber.
All right, even though the EPA says it's fine.
Yep.
Perfectly healthy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I did officiate my first college football game this past weekend on a coconut infill. It was awful. It was like running on concrete. My legs were, I swear, my legs were killing me afterwards. No, and the field was, the field, the field, again, with the irrigation...
Regular grass.
Yeah, we were...
What is it, like the husk?
The husks, yeah, they grind it up and mix it into the infill. And, you know, I had mentioned, when we talked about this over the years, that you need to add irrigation to an organic infill to keep it at a certain moisture, and in the Northeast, it's not ideal, because it'll freeze. But at the field I was at, in Atlanta, the field was wet, like it, it was slick because of the irrigation. And, you know, all the players were slipping and falling, and it was just, I couldn't imagine high school or college athletes playing on that consistently. If I was the coach or the athletic director, I'd say, get that out of here, it's, it puts us at a disadvantage. But recreationally, you know, it's, I'm sure it's different, I know Wilton has it, it's just not something that I would advocate for myself personally.
Would you be able to send me a copy of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I, I drove by Sullivan Field the other day, and, I mean, I didn't get out of the car, but it looks pretty good from the street.
Thank you.
I mean, it looks really good, it looks, and football's being played on it now?
Yes.
Or has been?
It has.
What are we doing to try new grass technology that maybe holds up better under, you know, the use that these fields get? I mean, because I was shocked at how good it looked from the street. Now, maybe it doesn't look good when you're standing on it, but, and even the soccer field looked really good, and I, as you know, I coached on that field for years, and it was terrible. But it looked really good the other day when I drove by.
I, I appreciate that. My office and my staff take a lot of pride in the work we've been doing on the fields. One of the reasons that those fields look better than in the past is because we literally closed them for six months out of the year. Sullivan was not open in the spring or the summer, so we didn't let anybody play on it, we said, we want this field to look good for the start of football. The Youth Football League also worked pretty well with us by not putting a lot of their older tackle games down there. They played them on the turf field, which helped on the wear and tear, so they had a lot of the flag games that were played there, which are typically the younger kids. So we saved, I would say, some maintenance there because the league helped buy in to what we were trying to do. You know, we'll see this spring. The field, like you said, right now, looks pretty good for the end of football season. Here we are in November and we don't need to go in and re-sod, you know, the entire middle of the field. Will we put lacrosse back on it in the spring? You know, I'm hesitant to do that. I think it'll depend on where we are with Ludlow being closed because we, normally, we'd have a lot of soccer and stuff at Ludlow that we have to play somewhere else. I don't know that I have the luxury of also keeping Sullivan closed again. But yeah, I mean, we are, we do have a nice, a pretty good turf specialist who's actually a local Fairfield guy, you know, who handles all our fertilization. And, you know, everything's organic that we're doing on our fields, which I know the RTM was excited about. We had a drought and the field still looks good. So yeah, I think, I think we're taking steps in the right direction with our field maintenance programs. And, you know, again, we just moved this into my department a year ago, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know that if this comes up at the RTM, that the question is going to be, "What are you doing grass-wise?"
Yep.
To make improvements long-term on whatever new grass technologies are out there to, I mean, you just answered the question with, well, you changed the scheduling, which maybe that's what we need to do. I mean, instead of dumping $4 million into something, we just schedule differently and schedule the type of games that are on these fields.
It was definitely, there's no doubt that that's part of it. And it's a matter also of, you know, adjusting the fields, too. I mean, you can't continue to put the soccer field in the same location, season after season after season, because the goal mouths will get beat up. And then you don't have time to replace them. Or even if you do have time, they're still going to get beat up. But if you move that field, if you have the space to move that field 10 feet forward, you know, in one direction, now it's a different spot that, you know, the wear and tear is. Or you could flip it, you know, horizontally, perpendicular to the field, you know, sometimes you can do that, too. Just really depends on the location.
Can those two fields go either way? Is there enough room to twist them that much?
I think the lights are in the way, from the football field lights.
What if you just spend money to move lights around?
That might, that might be, honestly, it might be, it might be something to consider. Doesn't help us with the, you know, the rainy days and, you know, all that that we lose time to, but I don't disagree. You know, it's, it's a matter of managing the fields and having the ability to manage the fields. And that's part of what, you know, with the lack of field space that we have, it's been one of the things that we've struggled with because we couldn't close a field. It would be great to close a field or two every season and let it rest and rotate through. We just haven't been able to do that. Again, I forced my staff to do that this year and, you know, football wasn't thrilled that they couldn't use the field in the summer. They had to make other arrangements. We have the same issue with baseball fields, really all our fields.
Well, everybody's soft today. I mean, in high school, they played soccer in the fall, they practiced on it, they played on it. Lacrosse in the spring, we practiced on it and played on it, it was a dust bowl and a mud bath. I mean...
Yeah, unfortunately... Unfortunately, we had, we've had dust bowls here in Fairfield and, you know, people call for my head when that happens, so...
Yeah, I mean, Anthony's master plan will show a utilization rate of our fields and such, but obviously, it's a, it's a huge amount of work for the Park and Rec staff because they have to schedule all of these teams and try to move it around and give a rest to these fields. And you deal with, you know, parents on, who want those fields and, and, you know, there is a huge, listen, we want our kids playing, we want our kids active and playing sports. It's a good thing for our community. But I think when Anthony's ready to come forth with the master plan, the recreation master plan, they're prob, they did a really thorough thing. We'll get a bit more, I think, insight, right, Anthony?
Yeah, yeah, January.
You know, what do we need really for our field use? Maybe, maybe we don't need another turf field, maybe we, I don't know, maybe we can use, I mean, potentially could put a couple soccer fields or fields up at the Giant Step property. You know, that's something I've had on my mind. I know there's been some, I haven't shared this, but there's been some interest from outside organizations to utilize that building. Just got a request about a private school, small private school that might want to use that other building. That's brand new. But we've always wanted to put some fields there because it makes sense. It's, it's a big property and at least one field to have up there. So there's a lot of ideas and options, but I think we have to look at the big picture before we make decisions going forward.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just, I don't know, I don't want to say I'm forewarning you, but you know, if this comes to the RTM, you're going to get all these questions of what you've done, what other things have you done? Are we getting money from the Fairfield Athletic Association that said for years? Because I sat through their first presentation when they wanted to turn Ward into a turf field pasture, you know? And, you know, they were talking about raising money then. I don't think they've raised a dime, have they?
No, I think they recently only got their 501(c)(3) designation. So now that they have it, they, they can raise money. But I don't know that they wanted to raise, I think my understanding was they didn't want to go and start raising money if the town wasn't fully backing the project and their group.
Right, and I think that's the purpose of this, for us to try to put things...
Now we're at the point, the town doesn't want to move forward unless we see their money in the bank.
Let's see the money. Show me the, show me the money.
I think we have to put it in a waterfall, you know, put a slot at somewhere where decide, you know, obviously, this process is to try to put together something for the coming year and then slot things in a five-year capital plan. And let's face it, if we put it somewhere and if they don't, we don't have, we don't have enough money coming from them, we make a decision at the end of the world.
That's all I have.
Good.
Because basically, you need twice the number of fields so you could rest one every year.
That'd be perfect.
The master plan.
That's what I'm hearing, Anthony.
Yeah, sounds about right.
Maybe at least on your backyard, oh, Walsh.
Resting, we're all good, we got enough fields.
Wallboard in your backyard.
Charge people.
Thanks, Anthony.
You got it.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks, Anthony.
So yeah, we're hoping to have Anthony be able to bring his master plan, do a joint meeting like we did with Penfield, you know, for everybody, hopefully in January. So I think that'll be interesting for not just the boards, but for the community as well. I just wanted to talk about the calendar. I know we moved some dates around back when we had set the calendar. Now, we moved the Board of Ed to...
I got moved to today.
Right, so, so we're going to have to...
Next one's the first. That's police, fire and senior center.
Police, fire and, so let's see here, what do we have? We have police, fire and senior center on the first. And then Thursday, the 8th, we had discussion of proposed capital and non-reoccurring and water pollution control. So what should we do? Do you think maybe we could maybe take a poll of the group when you want to squeeze another winner or you want to try to do? I think education really needs their own night.
I agree.
So let me look at the calendar here.
So everything's not just getting...
Maybe we could just squeeze in one, you know, like... So we have, what do we have here? The 16th is today. And then our next meeting isn't until the 1st, so... Obviously, next week is a holiday week. What do we got? Well, well, let me see.
Can we do that second week?
Like the 22nd or, well, the 23rd, no, the 23rd?
Are you in November?
I mean, that, yeah, that's, yeah, that's the night before Thanksgiving. That's not going to work.
It's going to be tough, next week's going to be tough.
And do you have an RTM meeting?
21st?
On the 28th?
Yes. That's the organization. You have to be there.
Oh, I do?
Yeah.
What, what is that for?
Organization, I mean, because you have to start the meeting.
You're in charge for five minutes.
For five minutes?
Maybe two, two and a half.
Will I be, will I be dismissed?
You'll be dismissed.
Wonderful.
Hopefully by me, but you know...
What if I don't give over the microphone to you, Mr. Moderator? And I just... Rule the world!
Now you do.
All right. I got a Brownie troupe coming. Well, we're past that. No, yeah, I'm looking at it right here. I mean... What do you think about, what about the 23rd? What about the 30th? Anybody interested in the 30th?
The 30th or what?
November.
A what?
A November?
Yeah, why, you don't like that?
No, no, I thought we were in December, I'm sorry. I can do, I can do the 30th.
Because what we have right now is the 1st and the 8th.
So we'd have, just so you know, we have Wednesday and Thursday. We'd have the 30th and then the 1st.
Oh, we would have back-to-back meetings, guys. Is that like, do you want to...
Give me a date.
The 30th and then...
At 4:00?
Mm-hmm. Because our last one is on the 8th? Unless you want to push, you know, to the following, the week of the 12th of December. So why don't you offer that? Because our last meeting, Nick, is December 8th.
So what day of the week is it? We have a meeting, the Board of Ed meets on the 13th.
So right now, we're meeting...
You're talking like the 14th or like the 12th?
Yeah, our last meeting is on the 8th of December of our presentations. So the week of the 12th would be open of December, so I don't know...
Are there any specific days that week that don't work?
I mean, is Monday cool or...
December 12th?
Yeah.
Monday works for me.
Oh, and...
We would probably have...
You got committees at night?
December 12th, we have committees.
I mean, we'll be done by...
We'll be done.
You're not going to take three hours, are you? You'd be like Anthony. Yeah, you were pretty good. Hey, that clock never got... Hey, Jerry, our clock didn't get changed.
Do you have a, do you have a Board of Ed meeting on the 14th?
Nick, do you?
The 14th?
14th, does that work or do you guys have a Board of Ed meeting?
We have a meeting on the 13th, the 14th could potentially, well, potentially work for me.
Do you want to email the group and then just...
I could do the 12th, it's no big deal.
All right, so...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we say the 30th, the 12th or the 14th and I will confirm with Angeles.
And then email the group?
And I'll email the group.
Beautiful, beautiful.
The only thing about the 12th is the committees.
You have the committees to start it.
And I'm going to be doing these two, if it's the Board of Ed, it could, I'll pivot and just, you know, put that out.
The 30th or the 14th?
Would I be... What? Could we just tape it here like we do with the thing?
Yeah, we could do it like, just record only, no broadcast. Then we don't have a problem with the...
But then you can put it up after?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, then, then we'll do that. Okay.
Well, I mean, if he's concerned about broadcasting.
No, he's saying, "I will tape, I will tape the meeting and it just won't be shown live", is all. That's not a big deal.
Angeles says 11:30 should be fine.
Well, I, I mean, we want to do night and back meetings, guys? Or do you want to push it to the...
I thought they originally wanted to go before everybody. They wanted to get, because they had...
Well, they were supposed to be on the 16th. We're not doing anything, these are just meetings.
A lot of, our roofs did get proof over and ready. So we're going to be presenting stuff that has already been...
Discussed.
Approved.
So do you want to try for the 12th then or, or you want to do the 30th? The 12th or the 30th?
What was the problem with the 30th?
Well, it's just back-to-back. We're going to be here on 1st.
Angeles says the December dates can work, too.
So it's up to you guys. Who do you want to, you want to meet back-to-back or do you want to...
I mean, the back-to-back gets us done by the December.
Yeah, I'd almost rather just, let's just get it done and then...
You want to do it on the 30th? Okay. Then sayonara? Okay. 30th, okay? All right, giddy up. All right, somebody note that?
Yep. And then we'll find out, Lori's not around.
I'm leaving for St. Kitts on the 21st, so, as long as everything's before then.
God bless you.
And we're going to do 4:00? Lucky you.
Yes, yes.
That's great.
Who's luckier than me?
I don't know.
Christmas in St. Kitts?
Not me, not me.
Nobody.
St. Kitts? Is that your Christmas in St. Kitts? Wow, that's pretty nice, I like that. I like that.
Kitts are old now, they don't need to have stuff under the...
I totally agree with you. I've been trying to get my family to do that for years.